Would you like to call the January 8th, 2015 meeting of Williamsburg City Council Order? Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Here.
Mr. Potts?
Here.
Mayor Hallman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fryling?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Mr. Foster is not here today. He's had previous commitment and wasn't able to make it today, so we will miss him at our meeting. First order of business today is council minutes from the meetings of December 8th and December 11th. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of the minutes of December 8th and December 11th.
Second. I have an emotion and a second. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Potts?
Aye.
Mayor Hallman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryling?
Aye.
Our next order of business is matters of special privilege, and today we have the honor of honoring one of our own. This is an Excellence in Service in Williamsburg Award presented to Fire Department Senior Secretary Nicole Fury. Nicole, if you would join me at the podium. I'm going to read the citation, and Nicole, I have both the citation and a plaque for you, and then I'll give you a chance to say something. This is a particularly important award for the city because it's one that comes from city staff. The peers of the person being honored are the ones that make this nomination, so Nicole, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to read the citation, and the city of Williamsburg takes pleasure in recognizing Nicole Fury for excellence in service to Williamsburg. Nicole Fury has served the citizens of Williamsburg for nine years with exceptional performance, first as a firefighter EMT and currently as a Senior Administrative Assistant for the Fire Department. She is a daily ambassador for the city, arranging station tours, school visits, and child safety seat installations. Nicole's initiative is evident in countless ways, from perfecting the department's webpage to revamping firefighter clothing and personal protective equipment inventory system. She redesigned the Fire Department's wellness and fitness program to promote healthy lifestyles for firefighters. She has carried employee health and wellness beyond the Fire Department, designing a challenging exercise regime for boot camp, an after-work exercise program open to all city employees. Nicole's creativity, enthusiasm, and passion for excellence are evident in all aspects of her work. Her positive attitude is infectious, making her an outstanding role model for other employees. Eagerly engaged with cross-department teams, Nicole embodies the city employee's leadership philosophy. Nicole Fury is hereby recognized for her commitment to excellence in keeping with the best tradition of public service in the city of Williamsburg dated today, January 8th, and signed by me as mayor and Jack Tuttle as city manager. Nicole, applaud.
I'm fairly scatterbrained when speaking in public, so I wrote it down, and I'll read it to you all. It's about four minutes. I've timed myself, so please bear with me. But I didn't want to just come up here and just say thank you. There are many people that I have to thank for the position that I am in today, so Mayor Hallman, Vice Mayor Fryling, members of City Council, and the fine men and women that I have the privilege of working alongside of every day. Thank you so much for this recognition. I must say that I am humbled, honored, and at the same time excited to be in your midst to receive the city's Excellence in Service Award. I want to take this opportunity to express my serious, sincere appreciation for providing me with the chance to call Williamsburg my home. Growing up in the military, I'd always dreamed of settling down in a small town and working for an establishment that promoted an atmosphere where teamwork is vital and where my desire to create and motivate was valued. I am surely a lucky lady, and I have found such a place in the city of Williamsburg. I tell people quite often, where else can you work where you can walk out of your office at lunch hour and stroll through a beautiful living history museum, or exercise after work by running through one of the oldest colleges in the country? How many people can say that the city manager and deputy city manager knows you by name? Moreover, how many people can say that they have the opportunity to improve their physical fitness alongside these two very busy individuals after a hard day's work? Additionally, how many people can say that they make these two individuals do 50 ankle jacks just as they do? And for those of you that don't know what an ankle jack is, please feel free to join us every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at 4:45 on the third floor, right down the hall, for boot camp. We would love the opportunity to enlighten all of you. Throughout my career with the city, I have the opportunity to work with some truly amazing and knowledgeable people. I believe that they are the reason why I'm standing here in front of you today. They have been my mentors and have taught me many things, and I feel that it's important to recognize them for the achievement that I have made today. First and foremost, I would like to thank my husband, Tim. He is one of my first mentors as the new firefighter with the city. He has always had a great deal of patience with me and loves to share his knowledge with anyone who is willing to learn. He is a true professional and an amazing husband, so thank you. Secondly, I would like to thank you, Chief Stone. I know you're watching. Chief Stone was my battalion chief when I was on shift, and now I'm mentor of mine in fire administration. He has taught me how important it is to come to work every day with a passion and desire to improve myself and the things around me. I am in awe of his knowledge of the fire service and how selfless he is when it comes to his family, friends, coworkers, and the community as a whole. I would like to thank you, Chief Dent. Chief Dent has this remarkable ability to read people and recognize their true abilities and potential. In the time that I have been working directly for him in fire administration, I have learned so much about the fire service, managing time, money, and people, and about life in general. He has a competitive spirit as I do, and this pushes me to improve myself in the things around me daily. I would also like to thank Battalion Chief Washington. This guy never stops moving. I don't think he even sleeps. I know he doesn't because he sends emails out like midnight and wakes up for his first workout at, what, 4:00 in the morning. I envy his personnel that had the privilege of working for him when he was a James City County employee. Now that he is ours, I am very excited every day that he is on shift. He is extremely optimistic and has taught me that with skill for persuasion and persistence, you can make anything happen. I feel guilty for just sitting down when he's around. I'm excited to add a new mentor to my list, even though he is not in our work performance top 10 yet. Deputy Chief Snyder recently joined our team, but in a short time, he has taught me that every day is a new day. He starts off every day by stating, "Let's do great things today." I look forward to learning more from him as time goes by. I would also like to make mention of others who have played an integral role in my time here with the city. They are men and women that I look up to and have influenced me in many ways over the course of my career, and they motivate me to be a better person and employee. I would like to thank Lieutenant Chris Garrett, Lieutenant Barry Kopczynski, Inspector George Wilson, Master Firefighter Lee Ward, Senior Firefighter Doug Bailey, Firefighter Tony Cologne, Howard Saunders, Troy La Patina, Chief Payne from York County Department of Life Safety, City Manager Jackson Tuttle, Deputy City Manager J.D. Miller, Jerry Walton, Lori Ryerson, Julie Ferris, Vicki Eric, Elsa Corrigan, Paula Kazi, and Cindy Floyd. All of you have made an impact on me, and I want to thank you for all that you do. Again, I am deeply honored that my peers have nominated me for this award. I am truly grateful for the opportunity to work for such a great city, and I mean it. I look forward to my future with this organization and the great memories that we will create together. Thank you very much.
(applause)
You sure as hell have to do an ankle jack?
(laughter)
Hate to forevermore, though, be noticed ankle joes.
(laughter)
Nicole, congratulations, and thank you again for all you do for this community. I really appreciate it. Next order of business and reports. First, the monthly financial statements. Jack, anything in particular?
Just one or two things to point out this month. We're halfway through fiscal year. On a good note, our revenues are running slightly ahead of last year by about $350,000 at the same time. School spending is not yet up to the same point as it was last year, but that's mainly just because of the timing of payments. But the most significant thing in here and what we tend to watch every month is what's happening with our major local revenue sources, local taxes. Room tax is running 1% below where we were at the same time last year, so we all know that continues to be an area of prime concern. However, meals tax currently is running 5% above the same point last year. That's a good sign. And sales tax at 3.8% above the same point last year. So those are two encouraging trends. We're not in any way where we want to be, but we're moving in the right direction. Any questions you have? Mr. Sarah's here, and he'll be happy to answer.
Just a quick, and I don't know if you have the answer, but with regards to meals tax, is there any sense of a reflection of more restaurants? I know we've added a few, and so is it really an indication that things are good in the restaurant business, or is it just there's more restaurants and maybe there's less per restaurant company?
Well, there's a third factor, and that's all pricing in restaurants as well. So it's all three, and I can't tell you which one in what proportion.
It may not be an indication that the restaurant industry is doing well. It's just that there's more sales coming.
Although a couple of years ago, we did do some analysis looking at some price indexes for restaurant, meals, it's called meals outside of the home. It's the index that the price index uses, and looking at that. I think what might be interesting is also to do that on a per-establishment basis and see what's happening. So I think we could do some analysis with both of those and come back with some trends that would give us a better sense of what's going on.
If that's available, sure.
Yeah, and the other thing that I've been looking at is in the hotel. You know, even though sort of room tax revenue is down a percent, the $2 tax, which actually is a measure of the number of rooms rented, is down, so that you get that combination of rooms rented and prices for the rooms that come into play with the room tax that don't come in, and that latter factor doesn't come into play with the $2 tax. So I think we could do some more analysis with that as well.
And the third factor, I think, is maybe less rooms are being rented at the lower end of the market and where the prices are lower.
Lower, right. So we can do some more analysis with all of that. Any other questions? Monthly department operating reports.
I do not have anything in particular to point out.
Any questions?
No, sir.
City manager reports. Today we have four. First is the Blair Middle School Project, an update by the school superintendent. Before we get to that, I'd like to recognize the fact that we have with us today the new chair of the school board, Jim Kelly. Thank you for being with us, Mr. Kelly. We also have our two city school board representatives, Elise Emanuel and Kira Cook. So thank you all for being here. And the superintendent, Mr. Constantino, thank you for being here. Jim, would you like to say a few words and then introduce the superintendent? Sure. Yeah, to the podium, please. Thank you.
Sure. Good afternoon, Mayor Hallman, members of City Council. First of all, I'd like to tell you how proud I am to be the chair of your school board. As you've said, Mrs. Cook and Mrs. Emanuel are here, and since we are not gathering in as a school board meeting, they will not be speaking. They will be sitting on their hands and probably biting their lips if I had to guess. The seven members of the school board do not differentiate ourselves as county or city representatives, but as seven leaders concerned about the education of all children, whether they be from the county or the city. With that being said, I'd like to congratulate City Council on your recent appointment of Kira Cook to the school board. She comes to the board with instant credibility and respect and a very small learning curve. I think she will serve us all very well. It goes without saying, I and every other board member have benefited from Mrs. Emanuel's counsel, and we certainly appreciate her service as well. Thank you for providing us this opportunity to present our plan for a fourth middle school in WJCC. I also want to thank the council for their continued support through this long and sometimes arduous process. It has been and continues to be greatly appreciated. Throughout this journey, our goal has never changed, to do what is best for students. With this goal always in mind and within fiscal constraints, we've developed the plan that Dr. Constantino will go into in greater detail in just a minute. While this may not be the optimal way to deliver a school, I believe that we have found a way to address capacity needs as well as provide a flexible learning environment that will help us as we work to incorporate 21st century skills into instruction. And this facility will deliver a high-quality education to our students from the first day the school opens and the first student walks through the door. Dr. Constantino will present our plan, but we still have a lot of work to do, and we will continue to have discussions with you and the county as the building is designed. But I am optimistic about where we are, where we are going, and how we're going to get there. Would that, Dr. Constantino?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Welcome, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. I'm always happy to address the City Council, and today I'm particularly happy to address you regarding the middle school plan. Let me just take a moment, and I won't take a lot of your time, I promise, but just take a moment to go backward to go forward. If I can take you back to last June, we had a pretty important meeting, the liaison meeting, in which we discussed a bit of a where do we go from here conversation. And from that point, there was a figure that we were asked to work within. I think prior to that, we were working off of designs and capacities and enrollments in future, and in June, we took a little bit of a different approach and said, if this is the monies that are available to us, how then can we perhaps, I use the term reverse engineer, I'm not sure that's the appropriate term, but how could we then start with the potential of money and then deliver a learning environment that's going to be appropriate for students for a long time? You know, as soon as we opened these doors, we're looking at a 40- or 50-year commitment, so we want to make sure that we get it right. And we worked through the summer and through the fall trying to figure that out, and what could we do? It was obvious to us, had been obvious to us for quite some time, but was even more obvious to us, that the Blair site was an appropriate site. There's been a lot of discussion about is it or isn't it? And it certainly is. We believe that we can build a good school, one that will serve students in the 21st century. Learning is changing. Just the advent of technology alone has changed how we do business in schools, and schools like businesses are rapidly adopting and changing. So the plan that we will go through with you today is a consolidation of what the school board originally heard in October. I also want to add for you before we start that one of the requests that we received in addition to how do we figure out the middle school problem was, when can we expect elementary and high school issues as well? And while that's not part of today's presentation, it very much was part of the presentation to the school board. There were comments about, you know, when can we expect an elementary capacity issue, and what might that look like? And when can we expect a high school capacity issue, and what might that look like? There is a presentation on our website, and we certainly can send you copies if you haven't seen it, where we have, with the help of our enrollment consultants and the help of our architects, we have determined, you know, that we will, elementary issues will come to us, I think, in 21, 2021. High school, perhaps just shortly after that. So we have a little bit of time to work on those solutions. So we prioritized, triaged, if you will, the middle school first, and then we certainly now have a better understanding of the needs for elementary and high school as we go along. Williamsburg James City County is one of the few school systems that through the recession continues to grow. We saw over 100 new students last year, and we're already predicting probably the same amount of growth for next year, if that holds true. So we continue to be a school district of choice, and many families come to our district because of the quality of life, I think, in our city and our county and the quality of our school system. So I think that's hopefully something that we can all be proud of. So let me just share with you, I know that you have this in front of you. This is an encapsulated version of what the school board saw, but basically it shares with you initially the property itself, the Blair building as it stands, the property that it stands on right now, and what that looks like, what it consists of, and then a little bit of history about the conversion of the Blair School into the central office in 2010. So the question was, how then do we create a middle school space on the Blair property that's going to serve the needs of kids for a long time? And the answer to that question on the next slide is to begin to retrofit the property. I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that what you're seeing today is phase one of a project. Phase one basically is this. Can we figure out a way to position a building that is an environment conducive to learning in the 21st century that has, uh-oh, what did I do wrong? Oh, thank you. I talked about all that. So what can we do to have a building that is going to meet our needs in the short term? And then phase two, which is not part of this project, which I can talk to you about or answer questions about, is something that comes way down the road when we think enrollments. And the reason that we're not sharing phase two at this point is largely because enrollments and projecting enrollments is slightly scientific. However, it is still a question of what do we project? And we feel relatively confident about projections two or three years, slightly less confident about five-year projections. And I don't think that we should be hanging a lot of hats on 10-year enrollment projections. So at this point, we have a 10-year projection, but that's going to continue to be changed and modified as the years go on. So we dealt with what we believe to be more certain issues with the middle school than the phase two, the long-term issues. As you can see in this slide, we will leave the central administration building exactly where it is. There is no plan at this time in this phase of the project to move the central office. It can coexist on the same property with the middle school. And you can see in this particular picture that the existing middle school, where the blue box is, will be retrofitted. You'll see a little bit more of that in a minute. And the new section, the new school, if you will, will be built behind that. It will be built down the Long Hill Road corridor. So the entrance, if you will, the school will be facing Long Hill Road and the bus loops and all of those things. And we've worked with the city planning and Mr. Tuttle, certainly with some road reconfigurations that are going to happen. All of those things have been taken into consideration in this plan. As a matter of fact, you'll see this drawing really is a drawing of what that new road configuration will look like, a little bit of a smaller parking area in the front. So a little bit more specific, the plan does call for changing the access to the administration building and separating it from what will be the middle school. That is the only modification to the administration building that is being recommended in this plan, such that students would come in one side, adults and central office employees would come in a completely different parking lot, a completely different area of the school. We would retrofit the front part of the building. We're looking at taking the space that is there, and I think you've heard me say a number of times that we're looking for some creative options to our schools, we're looking for flexibility with programs. You've heard me talk about STEM and STEAM and the International Baccalaureate. We have a number of options open to us. And so when we worked with our architects, we said, we don't exactly know yet what that's going to look like, but could you help us design that flexibility into this building so that when we get to final drawings and we get to the final educational specifications and outcomes, we have the opportunity to do that? And I'll explain a little bit of that to you in a minute. You'll see behind that a one-story addition where the gymnasium has been enlarged and relocated, the locker rooms, and the administration for the school has been changed. Obviously, it used to be over here, it's going up there. And then behind that will be a three-story addition, basically the academic wings to the building. This renovation, this repurposing of this part of the building would be to take the present gymnasium, if you see here, and convert that into what this particular drawing is calling STEM Labs, but we're utilizing that space for programmatic ideas for the middle school that we might use. We would renovate the auditorium into a smaller theater that could be used by the school, by the school district, by the school board. That would be renovated. And some other renovations, we would be moving the music wing and then relocating the media center, which in the original Blair was here, is now going to be over here in front of that building. And lastly, the access for parents, administrators, visitors, and buses. We had some discussions with city planning about the bus access. It was determined that the access should come off of Long Hill Road. Buses will be separated from parents and from drop-offs and from things like that. So this design allows us to ensure that what we want to do can be done. I should say to you as well that this drawing does not represent the final version of what this building is. This is simply a conceptual drawing to determine, to answer the question, can we do what we wanted to do? Can we have the learning space for 600 students? And can we make it the kind of space that we believe children are going to need now and into the future? And the answer is yes. As we put out, I'll tell you a little bit about our timeline from here forward. So I don't want you to look at this picture and say it's going to look exactly like this. This is simply a kind of a rendering of what it could look like, what it might look like. And lastly, the project costs, the central office would remain the same, $29.6 million in today's dollars, $32.3 million with three-year escalation. We've been working with a figure of about $30 million based on county and city contributions, and we think we've come up with a plan that will meet our financial needs and, more importantly, meet the learning needs of students. Where we go from here is we are preparing an RFP, a design RFP, right now that will hit the streets, I think, in February, and we'll be making a decision in April about the final architectural designs. And then we start a year-long process into educational specifics and designs. The building starts construction. There's a building timeline. Construction starts, Mr. Snyder.
July 2016.
July 2016, and the building is scheduled to open the fall of 2018. So it's a doable timeline. There is some margin for change, not a lot. So we're going to do our best to stick to that timeline. So I know that you have sat through many meetings about the middle school, and we've had lots of iterations, and even though that there are times, it has been an arduous process, I'm very happy. Somebody asked me the question, is this going to meet the needs of the students? Yes, it will. Is the Blair site appropriate for a middle school? Yes, it was for many, many years, and it will be for many years. We're considering an urban school design where it's built up perhaps more than a suburban or rural school might be built out, but there's plenty of space. We've taken into consideration student play areas, athletic areas, corridor areas, safety. All of those issues have been taken into consideration as we move forward with this plan. So we appreciate your support. We appreciate the good questions and the good direction that you've given us, and we're happy that we think we have a plan that we can move forward with. What questions do you have for us? Perfect. Thank you very much. Questions?
Sure. Let me just start by thanking the administration and the school board for their efforts in navigating a long and somewhat complicated path, and we appreciate your attention to detail and working through the challenges as they arise and keeping your focus, as you've said, on what's going to benefit the students. And I think we all really appreciate that. I know this is conceptual. We shouldn't really be asking specific questions about the layout you presented to us, but I can't resist, so indulge me for just a few.
I will do my best to answer those questions.
Could you just give us an idea of what are the comparable benefits or advantages? Could you just give us an idea of what are the comparable benefits or advantages or disadvantages of multi-story versus single-story schools?
Well, you know, I think that...I don't think there's a disadvantage to a multi-story school. I think that the advantage in this design is that if we have a school that is sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we are able to have a grade level on each one of those floors. I think that opens us up to more possibilities. Often, the transition from fifth to sixth grade, for example, is an important transition. And for many years in educational history, sixth grade was part of elementary school. With the middle school concept that came through a number of years ago, sixth grade suddenly became part of the middle school. Most middle school concepts still try to isolate and nurture sixth-grade students to get them ready for seventh and eighth grade. So I think one of the benefits of this design is that we can have students segmented by floor. That doesn't mean to say that we can't have students working interactively between grade levels. There's plenty of access through the building. I also think in this particular design, it puts all of the academic needs in one portion of the school, such that we don't have to go from one end to the other to go to a math class, or we don't have to traverse the building to get to another academic need. And I think that the location, we talked a lot about the location of the media center and the gymnasium. And again, this may not be the final design, but a lot of the conversations we have are trying to follow the path of a student during the day. Can you get to where you need to go? And so I see no disadvantage to a school that is three stories. There are beautiful schools around the country in lots of settings that are three stories, four stories, six stories. Hornsby is three stories. So I think there are some advantages to it in terms of the ideas that I've just shared with you. And this particular piece of property, to make sure that we kept the green space and kept the place for kids, you know, building up was the option we had.
And you referenced a smaller auditorium in the renovation. What do you feel that might be comparable to size-wise in our other school facilities?
It's the same. It would be the same size as the auditorium is there now, which is relatively comparable. I haven't counted the exact seats, but it's...the Tuaneau, for example, the Tuaneau auditorium is extremely small. The Hornsby auditorium, I don't know if you know seat capacity off the top of your head. Forty-five. And do you know the seats that are there now in Blair in 45? So it's comparable. And so this would be a retrofit. Now, I will say that what you're not seeing, what we're not talking about, because it's way down the road, is Phase Three. And should the enrollment ever get to that point, one of the ideas, obviously, the school would have to be built out this way. And there is an idea that another auditorium be built, and this would be retrofitted into something else. But that's so far down the road that it's not overly realistic to talk about that today.
And do you see the, I think you called them STEM facilities or spaces that are the old gymnasium? Do you see those as leading into what's going to be available in the high school environment? Or are they going to be somewhat ahead facility-wise in what we currently have?
That's a great question. You know, we've talked a lot about educational programming at the middle school and the high school level. By the time this opens, I would like it to be leading to something. For example, we're working right now, a lot of programmatic changes at War Hill High School with the Project Lead the Way, the promotion of STEM education at War Hill. We're looking at a governor's program at War Hill High School. We're also looking at the ideas of, you know, specialty, what I call specialty programs. That may or may not be the right terminology, but programs that would attract specific interest for kids, and would we have those programs available in one of our high schools? So perhaps in the beginning, to be...my speculation would be, in the beginning, this middle school might be slightly ahead. However, the plan would be that by the time students were getting into high schools, we would have specific programs for them to follow into. We know that as we look at specializations within learning, that has to translate to the high school level at some point.
And then lastly, as you consider the conceptual design and then the eventual final design, do you talk about, where do we put trailers if and when we need them? Is that something that's...I don't mean that facetiously. I mean, it's a...
I personally don't talk about trailers.
We end up doing it.
We have not discussed where we would put a trailer should we need one. I'm pretty confident, however, that there is enough space on the property that should that have to happen. And very may, may very well happen, for example, if we did get to Phase Three and we had to do some construction on the site, we may have to rotate students into trailers as that construction is being done. I believe there is ample space on the property for the trailers that we would need. We believe, however, and again, I hesitate to say this with a great deal of confidence, but to the degree that you can be confident about enrollment projections five, six, seven years out, we should have plenty of time to understand our capacity needs long before we have a trailer situation. Whether or not we can financially meet that need when we need to will be a question that comes up at that time. But if we have this 600-space school, we should be okay. Now, there's a lot of ifs. If enrollment projects the way it's supposed to project, if finances are available, et cetera, et cetera. So the question is, have we looked at where trailers will go specifically? No. Do I believe that we can position trailers on the property? Yeah, because we talked about it only in terms of when we transitioned the building to a larger school. Obviously, we'd have to use them.
Just let me say about trailers, in some way, they're almost a necessity of an expanding school system because you can't just have at your disposal all the new facilities that you need as your student population grows. My own children have had plenty of classes in trailers, and it's not the ideal classroom setting, but it's not really that bad. To me, the problem with trailers is what it says about the expansion of the school population, if the core facilities in the school aren't capable of handling the increased number of students, you put pressure on the total student dynamic. And that's, to me, is the bigger issue.
And let me talk to you about, that's a really great point about core facilities. This design, although conceptual, this gymnasium obviously is better than this gymnasium. So we have already started to think about core designs for larger numbers of students. The hallways, for example, you can see some of these designs and the way these main hallways are. We've already thought about... Because we all know that when trying to add to a school, you know, one of the biggest downside of adding classrooms is the stress on the core facilities, the hallways, cafeteria. So in the conceptual drawings that we have seen, which are a little less detailed than this, about what another phase might look like, the cafeteria would be enlarged and moved, the gymnasium would already be a core facility, and the auditorium would be enlarged and moved, such that if we had eight or 900 students in the building, the facility would be able to hold a load.
Great. Thank you.
Dr. Constantino, thank you for coming, Mr. Kelly and the others.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear. I guess part of my concern, but I think you're thinking about it, what I'm hearing, is that you're talking about how this first phase will be affected by what we already know to be an expansion and making sure that we don't find ourselves in the situation where we are now when we talk about expanding other schools that were built kind of, you know, in their entirety years ago. It makes it hard to expand. So I'm glad that you all were doing that today. I really don't have any questions. I'm glad we're at this point and we're moving forward. The longer we wait, you know, it's the students that suffer, you know, in overcrowded schools today. So this, I don't think, is the most optimum solution. I think it's kind of penny-wise today, but pound-fullish tomorrow. But with that said, it's the best opportunity we have today, so I'm ready to get it going.
Great. Judy?
Thank you for being here, all of you. I was impressed with your comment about following the students in the design. And I hope there's also a follow the teacher, because I've been through, my children are an age, and I now have a grandchild, we've been through all kinds of fads, I mean, open classrooms, the whole nine yards. And every single time, it comes down to the quality of the teacher. It doesn't seem to matter what the fad is. It comes down to whether or not the teacher in the classroom is really good. So I think providing for the teachers is as important as providing for the students.
When we get, and you're absolutely right, one of the reasons for the three-story academic wing, in addition to student flow, was, you know, teacher prep areas. And we think about, I don't want to get into a lesson of a teacher's education, but we know that in order to be successful with kids, we are probably going to have to regroup their learning when we need to regroup it. And it might be on a weekly or monthly basis. We might need to take 25 students, and we distribute them based on standards that they have mastered and standards that they have not yet mastered. And so I have been, I've pressed from the very beginning to make sure that we have a space in which teachers can also reorganize and regroup and teach students differently, perhaps week to week or month to month, if they needed to. And so your question is a very important one, and it's something that we did keep in mind, and we will continue actually as we get to real drawings and real educational concepts. That's a big one in terms of making sure, it's nice to say we want to do this, we have to make sure that we design a facility that it can be done.
Thank you.
Perfect. Let me follow up on that. What I've heard from you is sort of designing space that creates flexibility and options for the future. And it seems to me that as both technology and pedagogy change, the way we use space changes. And so talk to me a little bit about, sort of, put your forecasting hat on here. You know, as technology and pedagogy change is going into the future, the types of space we need now and the amount of space we need now may not be the same as what we need in the future. So building this school in a way that today accommodates 600 students may mean that in the future, with those types of changes, the existing schools in this may be sufficient to meet those needs. We all know that. But how important has that been in your thinking about this facility?
If we go back to some of my very first comments, when I first suggested that we pursue a fourth middle school, I talked about the flexibility in design, for example, for evening use, alternative use, and high school use. I certainly believe, and again, I'm forecasting, but if what I read is correct and what I see and hear is correct, blended learning models and flexible learning models, and we're seeing it in our schools right now, you've heard or may hear the term flipped classroom. And I would encourage you, if you want to visit our schools, if you're interested in that, we certainly can make that available to you. Where students are getting the content direction they need from a video and coming to school and applying that information with a teacher who is helping them with that application, because that's what the standards of learning now are requiring of our students. It's not pick one of these four things. It's based on what you know about this, make this happen. So flipped classrooms, blended learning models, we hear the term now, personalized learning, all of those things mean technology-assisted education. Not sitting a student in front of a computer, not replacing teachers, not replacing education as we know it. But the use of space has changed dramatically. If a student can, for example, we are starting a one-to-one personalized learning initiative at Tuaneau Middle School, a pilot to study the use of computers as electronic textbooks. And we aren't far away from all of the textbooks that a student needs being about the size of your iPad in front of you. And to use that in schools would mean, just that, means a very different use of space. And so I think it's to our advantage to try to the best of our ability to incorporate different kinds of spaces and to build the amount of flexibility that we can without going backwards and doing things that we've done in the past. You know, I've had people comment to me, "Well, you're trying to build another one of those wall-less schools again." No, that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to make sure that whatever the learning needs of kids are on a particular day, we can meet them with some sort of flexible design. We're not building plastic walls or no walls. But we are suggesting that there are spaces that are not classrooms. There are spaces that are meeting spaces and places where kids can learn differently, kids who need different kinds of spaces. We've talked for years about alternative education. We're going to be talking to the board over the weekend about some flexible learning design pilots that we're going to start this spring, largely with the use of blended learning models with computers. And so it will change, it will change the use of space. And we're, all of the educationally oriented architects are very adept at understanding what we're seeing now as being changes in education. And whichever architect is the successful one, I guarantee you will be one that understands this concept. And most schools that are being built now are being built with this flexibility idea in mind.
Perfect. Thank you. Again, thank all of Jim, Lisa, Kira, thank you for being here. Mr. Superintendent, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
And we stand ready to work with you guys to make this happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next agenda item...
Do we have a recommendation here of a vote we have to take?
Yes.
There's an action?
I'd be happy to move that city council endorse the school board's plan for James Blair conversion and new construction for Phase One of a fourth middle school of approximately 600-student capacity and including the retention of Central Administration on the Blair campus pending Phase Two expansion of the middle school.
Second, I have a motion and second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Walton?
Ms. Diggs?
Aye.
Mr. Pond?
Aye.
Mayor Bond?
Aye.
Thank you all very much, and I think we look forward to the next couple of years. Thanks. Next agenda item is speedhumps on Governor Berkeley Road.
Yes, sir. Mr. Clayton, will you report?
Mayor, members of council, as you know, the residents along Governor Berkeley Road have expressed their desire... for traffic calming, citing both speeding concerns and that Governor Berkeley is a cut-through street between Long Hill Road and Richmond Road. Staff, including the city manager, the police chief, and myself met on site to discuss their concerns and to talk about some possible options. Prior to that meeting, some enhanced signage was installed, both larger 25 mile an hour speed signs and the high visibility fluorescent watch for children signs. Further, through trucks and buses are prohibited on Governor Berkeley. After our meeting with the residents, which is well-attended, a petition was received for the city to do two initiatives on Governor Berkeley. First was to designate Governor Berkeley Road as an all-mended fine street, carrying an additional $200 fine for speeding. And secondly, to install speedhumps. By resolution, council approved the additional fine for Governor Berkeley in October, and the proper signs have been erected. Today, we are dealing with the speedhump request. We do have a speedhump policy, and to date, we do not have any speedhumps in the city. There has been some limited interest, but not enough of a strong consensus to move forward with any speedhumps on any of our streets. Governor Berkeley meets the qualifying criteria for speedhumps if you disregard Number Six, which deals with the residents paying half the cost. And I'll get to that later. Just quickly going over these criteria here, they've met the 675 percent petition. Governor Berkeley is a two-lane road with a 25 mile an hour speed limit and is designated as a local street. And Number Four there, the street frontage is more than 95 percent residential. Number Five is really where the meat of the qualifying criteria come in. You either have to have a speeding problem or a cut-through traffic problem. Our police department gathered some speed data using a small monitoring device, and the data did not indicate that we have a speeding problem. Average speeds were around 20 miles per hour, and the 85th percentile of speed was 26 miles per hour, which is below the threshold. And what that's really saying is 85 percent of your traffic is going, in this case, 26 miles per hour or lower, and then 15 percent are going over that. So what... So was there speeding? Yes, there's, there's some cars speeding, but a vast majority of the cars were not going, were not speeding, so, and it does not meet our definition on this speed hump policy of being a speeding, of being a speeding problem. And yeah, there are people going 35, even 40, but as, as you know, between Long Hill Road and Thomas Nelson, it's not a long distance, and you're stopping at Thomas Nelson, so I'm not, really not surprised at these numbers. But there are, there are some outliers where folks are speeding through there, that's gonna, that's gonna happen. But for this standard, they didn't meet the speeding through, speeding test. But previous studies conducted Skip with Farms have shown that a cut-through problem on Governor Berkeley does exist. This slide here shows what's, what, what happens here is that 60 percent of the traffic on Long Hill, I can get mine, there it is here, oops, there we go, 60, of the cars turning on Governor Berkeley off of Long Hill Road, 60 percent of that traffic on Governor Berkeley from Long Hill is turning onto Richmond Road, so there's no stopping in here, there's no destination in here. And on the, in the reverse, we have from Richmond Road, I think, was it 45 percent of the vehicles were cutting through and going up Long Hill Road. So there's definitely a, a cut-through problem on Governor Berkeley. So we moved forward, and the next step, we had our traffic consultant look at the feasibility and to suggest some possible speed hump, the number, and also to look at the locations of some possible speed humps. This drawing here shows the location of two speed humps between Long Hill Road and Thomas Nelson. We don't need any between Richmond Road and Thomas Nelson because of the, it's not really shown on this very well, but this section here, as you all know, it's got some tight curves in there, and also there's a stop sign here at Thomas Nelson, so there's no need for any kind of traffic calming in that block. We also, this drawing also shows some typical installations of speed humps here, there's the typical signage that you see, and there's another one here, and there's a third one up there. So that's, that's what they look like, installed. Yeah, in the Weasberg area, I don't know of many speed humps, I know we have one in the Newtown area on Casey, Casey Boulevard, that's just been put in the last year or so. And that would, that's typical of what this speed hump would look like, too. Finally, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at here, the dimensions of the most typically used speed hump, it's 12-foot long, and it's three to four inches at the highest point. And of course, these are not the speed bumps that you see in parking lots, these, those little two-foot things that are pretty high, they're much more abrupt. But it's more of a gradual thing, but you do need to slow down to go, to go over this thing. Should council approve the installation of the speed humps on Governor Berkeley, staff views this as a pilot project, and for that reason, we would recommend that the residents not be required to contribute to the cost. Each hump is estimated to cost about $5,000. We'd have them installed by contract, and then staff would monitor these over the next year or so. Once a pattern is established, initially, it's gonna be a little bit erratic data in the next, probably first six months, but over, say, a period of a year or so, we'll see how this thing's working out. I'll just let you know, speed humps are the most common traffic calming device measure in the United States, and it's been shown that generally speaking now, volume reductions of 25 to 35 percent can be expected. Some cases, you don't get hardly anything, some cases, it's, it's big, but just in, in very general terms, you're looking at 25, 30 percent reduction in the volumes. So staff's recommending approval of the installation of the two speed humps on Governor Berkeley, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dan, appreciate it. Paul, any questions?
Mr. Clayton, you mentioned at the very beginning that at other times, there has been interest in speed humps and possibly in other locations, but not to the point that they ever were installed. Was that because there was a, a lack of meeting the criteria for the street from our objective set of guidelines? Is it because they, we couldn't get the number of residents on the street to agree, or was cost ever the issue?
It was, cost was a factor, it was, we never had, had a strong enough petition, the 75 percent petition from anywhere. No, on Newport Avenue, as a matter of fact, we, we, we worked with those folks over there, and I think they got up around 40, 50 percent of the residents supported it. Now, how much of that was cost? I don't know, but that would, that would have been a factor, yes. But there's some strong feelings on, and there's a lot more, there's quite a few more houses on that section than it is on Governor Berkeley, so they had to get maybe 10, 12 people to, to go along with it, shorter streets, so.
And I understand the reference here in that it's a pilot project and the city would be covering the cost, but we also need to think about, what does that mean the next time somebody's interested in speed humps? Are we just going to, and I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, we just need to be cognizant of the fact that the next applicant's gonna say, well, you should test it here, too. That's all.
All right. Well, and I was, to build on that, maybe you could talk a little bit more about why you recommend that this be the pilot program and that the city would pay for half versus sticking with the policy?
Well, we, like I said, we've had some interest, and they are used quite a bit around the country. I think, you could, the bottom line with us, I think we figure that to, to try a couple of speed humps in here, we know we do have a big, it's, you know, anytime you get 6% of traffic coming in front of your house, that, this really is not, this is really cutting through, I think, I think you need to deal with that, and, and it would be something I like, we'd like to know how effective these things are, so that's what, that's what I'm thinking, was.
Other questions?
Judy.
I don't really have a question, but I'm inclined to stay with the policy and not, not regard this as a special case.
Yes, I do have a couple of questions. On, on the reductions you talked about, and it seems to me, the ability of something like this, and they are called speed humps, they aren't called traffic diversion humps for a reason, that in part, the reduction might depend on what, what alternative routes are available. So what, what alternative routes are available here that you see? And are we simply moving the problem from one street to another street? Or are the alternatives so, you know, objectionable to the people doing it that they're gonna do this anyway?
We looked at that, we, it's always a concern that you're just moving one problem to somewhere else. The alternate route here, if you wanted, if this thing bothers you enough where you wanted to go, if you still want to go through, but you.
You don't want to drive all the way down to Ironbound and go back, so.
Right, you know, basically what's happening here is there's, out to the west Weasberg area, Denny County, Sports Colony, Windsor Forest area, if you think about it, there's not a road between Ironbound Road and Old Town Road, pretty good distance between those two streets. So it's only a place to cut through to get over to where you want to go. So it's, it's, it's an attractive cut through. That's what's happening. Now, we, we, we think that the alternate would be, if somebody really wanted to go out of their way, they would use Robert E. Litt. You come down Long Hill, instead of turning a left on Governor Brook, you turn a left on, on, um, Robert E. Litt, then take a right on Robert E. Litt. And we think that's a little bit circuitous, so I, I don't, we don't anticipate that being, sure, some folks are gonna go that way, but I don't think it's to the point of being, quote, a problem. And we didn't, there's not, there wasn't a, much, this wasn't a big movement here either, because most everybody gets out on this road once they want to go this way. They'll, they'll go to Richmond Road and come out, I think. So that's the other alternative, I'd say, Robert E. Litt could be a possibility, some, some cars went that way.
Judy. Just following up a little bit on that, we're gonna fix the intersection at, down by James Blair. We're, I mean, that, one of the problems is that intersection's a pain in the neck. You know, there are no lights, it's hard to turn left. But once we fix that intersection, is that gonna take some of the people?
That's a good point. Like you said, if you're on Long Hill Road, depending on what time of day it is.
Yeah.
You know, you got a choice.
It's one of the schools.
You turn a left on Governor Berkeley against Richmond Road, or you turn a left on Ironbound.
Right.
And as we all know, that left on Ironbound can be tough at certain times.
Oh, yeah.
So folks will turn a left on, on Governor Berkeley. I think it can work either way, though. I think if you look, if you think about it, the, the traffic be better there, but you still gotta wait, you got a light. You turn a left on Governor Brook, you get a right turn on red on Richmond Road. So it'll help some, but it'll also make it easier to turn on Long Hill Road.
That's right.
They tell you the truth, so it works both ways.
Yeah, and I'm not a traffic engineer, not a lot of things, but traffic engineer's not one of them. Governor Berkeley is just, it's, it's a convenient cut through. As you look at the map, you know, could the speed humps divert people onto Robert E. Litt or Thomas Nelson, that upper end? It could, but gosh, I just don't see it happening to any great numbers. You know, one or two people who know and, and, and just, by the time you hit a couple of stop signs in there, it's, it's, it's not worth going down Thomas Nelson or Robert E. Litt. So I think the speed humps are gonna have a, have a significant impact. And then, and I was gonna make the point that, that Councilman Newton did, I think that intersection will help, but at the same time, as the school expands and we got more traffic, I think that might put more burden on Governor Berkeley. So it's almost fair to, I, I think putting the speed humps in today would help condition traffic, you know, in the future, and lessen the impact that may happen around it.
You know, one of the reasons people may want to cut through on Governor Berkeley to get out to Long Hill is that it shortens the amount of time or the amount of distance that one has to travel on Long Hill with the additional fine for exceeding 25 miles an hour, because you've got a much longer stretch of that on Long Hill that you cut off by cutting through here. And so all, by, by the combination of the hump and the additional fine on Governor Berkeley, you've taken away one of those benefits of cutting through. Let me just go back to one thing I referenced before about, let's just be aware of what we're doing if we approve this with the cost issue. I live on a street that's about 99 percent cut through. I mean, nobody is going to where I am on my street. They're coming off of 199 and going into town, or coming out of town and going to 199. It's a corridor. That's where we moved. We knew it was a corridor when we moved there. I don't think that people who move into a neighborhood like Skip with Farms, and I think Newport and Griffin Avenue are another great example of that, they have a different expectation of what the urban environment on those streets is going to be because it, it's just different. And so from that standpoint, I, I mean, I view this as, I'm torn a little bit. I mean, and one end, I view it as responsible city infrastructure that provides a safe environment for motorists and pedestrians. And should we put that burden on the people who live there? I mean, we don't charge anybody for stop signs, yield signs, slow children to play, stoplights, crosswalks, I mean, none of that do we charge for. So I'm just wondering, that's why I brought this up, I think, should we even have that item number six or whatever it was on, on the list of criteria? Should that even be part of it, or should it just be, you have to hit a pretty significant threshold of community buy-in? I know I live, people wouldn't want the way it looks, and they wouldn't want the inconvenience of being residents there and having to drive over them themselves, so I think you probably encountered that in your street. So it's a pretty high threshold to get through anyway. I just, I just worry about saying, this one is a test and all others are gonna go back to the, the same criteria.
Yeah, I, I worry about that, and I, I worry about whether this will really make a difference in cut through. I just, I really think that given, given the, the lack of alternatives, that if people are gonna cut through, they're going to cut through whether those speed bumps are there or not. There's certainly not a speeding problem. I mean, I, I, like you, I live on a street that has much higher cut through than, than these percentages. And I would say at times, speeds that are pretty frightening, as I'm out walking dogs all the time, I get to see it up, up close and personal sometimes. So I'm just not convinced that this is the, the, the traffic calming measure that best will result in what, what the residents want to happen on that street. I mean, we did talk about the possibility of putting a stop sign, put the map back up there, at, yeah, at that corner, 'cause there is a stop sign already at, right there. What if you put another stop sign in, in here? Wouldn't that serve the same thing? But the residents didn't want that, as I understand, and, and, you know, it seems to me, you know, if, if the objective, if speed's not a problem and, and cut through is a problem, although it's not as big a problem as on a number of other streets in the city, is this the best way to do it? And I'm not convinced it is the best way to do it.
Well, and speed bumps are significantly more expensive than stop signs.
That's right, yes, exactly.
You know, yield signs or whatever.
And, and to go back, I, you know, I think these are extraordinary measures to take in, in the sense of the speed hump. And there, having buy-in from the, the residents not only means, yeah, I'd like that to happen on my street, but yeah, I'd like that to happen, and here, I'm willing to put something in to make that happen. That seems to me to be what's behind the policy. Now, whether 50 percent's the right percentage, I'm, I'm not sure about that, but I would like to see some more buy-in from the community saying, we think this is important, and we think it's important enough that we're gonna put something in to make it happen.
Well, I think Mr. Clayton had stated that speed humps are the number one traffic calming measure that can be deployed, and.
But traffic calming means both speed and cut through, right?
Sure. And so, and then we're talking about cut through, and I, I, I don't dismiss your, your notion that a, a stop sign there wouldn't help, I think it would help, but I don't think it would have the effect that speed humps would have. So I, I'm sorry?
Why not? I mean, you'd have to stop, but a stop.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to stop versus slow down for a speed hump, I'm not sure.
I think if somebody's reckless and they're coming through there and they have to stop, yeah, gosh, then do they just accelerate too fast, and then all of a sudden, you got this little raceway? I, you know, I don't know. I think if you have to go over two speed humps, it'll make a significant difference.
The only advantage of speed humps is they're self-enforcing, they're there.
Yeah.
You know, the stop signs, you know, you get into an issue, I think the stop signs is actually to go, we did bring that up there in our meeting, and we thought that was, you know, a little, a little surprise the residents didn't come back with that, because it's easy to do, et cetera, et cetera. The, like I said, the only advantage of speed humps, it's there, self-enforcing, this would cause, you know, the police to have to monitor the stop signs, that kind of thing. And for the most part, you would get rolling stops through there, but nonetheless, it would stop, it would slow folks down to five miles an hour, so it would, it would be effective, so, just a comment.
Well, I think it conforms to the city's policy, the neighbors, the residents want it, and staff has recommended it, and I'm comfortable with it. And I'd be one.
Would you like to make them up?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I recommend the City Council, Council authorize the installation of two speed humps on Governor's Berkeley Road per city speed hump policy. Further, that the city pay for the entire cost of the installation as a pilot project, and reassert that the requirement that residents participate in the cost of the installation in the future cases be, uh, per the, per the policy.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Walton?
Ms. Newton.
No.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Walman.
No.
Vice Mayor Park.
Aye.
Motion fails on a tied vote. We'll continue the discussion with the residents. There's a public comment period at the end of the meeting. Third, city manager report is a schedule and process for fiscal 2016 budget. Jack?
Yes, sir. We're well into the budget process at the staff level, and City Council will, will soon be there. Your first feeding of, of content on the budget will be at the retreat of January 31. And at that time, as always, we'll be looking ahead, a multi-year financial forecast, and also give at least some look ahead of what some of the issues we see in, in the budget. The, the next council meeting of importance in, you know, in the budget will be the joint meeting on schools with the school board and James City County, that's now scheduled, tentatively at least, for March 11. And then on March 23rd will be a evening work session on the budget. This is prior to the time that the proposed budgets actually will be issued. The, this is mainly for outside agency budget discussions. On March 27, the proposed budget will be delivered to council. Also backing up a bit, March 7 is actually the date when we must advertise the intended property tax increase, because it has to be 30 days out in advance of the, the budget, the budget public hearing. So I will be in communication with you and say what the intention is with regard to that ad, and essentially, it's, if, if there's any intended property tax increase in the, in the proposed budget, that would go into the ad, if not, it would go in without a property tax increase. If not, it would go in without a property tax increase. Then on, in April, both at the council work session, there'll be an open forum opportunity for informal public comment on the budget, as well as the formal public hearing at the April City Council meeting. Then if any additional work sessions are required by council, you can schedule those prior to adoption at the May council meeting. So that's what the process is like this year. And any questions or comments on that?
And we do have a City Council retreat on January 31.
Yes, sir. And that'll be the.
Focus on this as well.
That'll be the kickoff, yes, sir.
Any questions?
I have two. You mentioned that the March 11 date is tentative?
I believe it's pretty well said, is it not?
We're waiting.
Still, we're still waiting.
Not on any of us?
Not yet.
Okay.
No, it's good with the City Council, but we haven't heard from the other five.
We'll all be there.
I just worry that if we don't get that pinned down, well, Ms. Walton can tell you, it's no picnic trying to find another date. The other question, you referenced the publication of information about a tax increase. That's not necessarily just an increase in the tax rate.
Correct. The way.
Could you explain that to people?
Yes, the way it works, if the effect of your assessments and your proposed tax rate is to generate an increase in the property tax receipts, you have to advertise that as a property tax increase. And we won't know that until we know what the assessment projections are, that will be in the budget, so it's the two together. But in any case, there needs to be an ad. The point is that you cannot go above that amount in your adopted budget without re-advertising and doing a separate public hearing on the budget. It can be re-advertised if you determine at a later date you need to do it, but that's the state law, which actually is not a very good law.
Well, I just mentioned, I want to encourage people, if they see that, listen or read it carefully and understand what the ad is actually saying, because it might be the rate is staying the same.
Sure.
Or it potentially could be the rate is going down, but if the assessments went up enough, it would be a tax increase.
I liken this to the General Assembly putting an ad into every newspaper in the Commonwealth saying, we're going to increase your taxes, when they intend to leave the tax rates alone, but yet the economy has grown somewhat, so they intend to get more receipts. That's what they require local government to do.
Does the water rate have to be advertised?
Water rate, yes, at a different schedule. There has to be seven days out, and there must be an ad that indicates any change in water and sewer rates, and we'll do that.
So what rates will be in this, the advertisement?
The initial advertisement on the 7th deals only with the property tax.
Only with property tax. Any other questions on the timing, the process going forward? Done this a number of times before.
But this will be the first time, it's Mr. Tuttle's last time.
That's right. That's right. Why does he have a smile?
He smiled at his son, yeah.
Some please.
Okay, thank you. And we will be talking about this multiple times going forward.
Yes, sir.
Thanks. The next City Manager Report is housing concepts for city discussion, City Council discussion.
Mr. Mayor Wal, I kind of introduced this when I asked Carolyn and Reed and Peter Walch, they come up and have a sheet at the table, because the intention is, there's no action in this today's meeting, but to have a conversation. Just by way of background, at the December council meeting, the request of Portapath Associates for a special use permit to convert 60 motel units to 40 apartments was deferred until the February meeting, and staff asked, the council asked staff to report back on concepts and approaches to address the need for workforce housing in the city and in the region, and including consideration of using some existing hotel capacity. So staff is proceeding with the assignment, we've been working on this, but we thought it would be helpful to have a conversation with you and in the midst of that, and to put this into the overall context of affordable workforce housing in Williamsburg. So what we'd like to do is begin with Carolyn Murphy and with Reed Nester to talk about what is the picture today, both on single-family and multifamily housing, addressing affordable housing needs. And then we're going to go to a chart and talk about several different possible alternatives in the area of public housing and several others that we, as we are considering coming back to you next month with recommendations. So at this point, I think what we'd like to do is turn it over to Carolyn Murphy for the briefing.
Before you do that, I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor, by the way, I just want to disclose that I do own property in the B2 district, and, but that shouldn't preclude me from being able to discuss those issues. I won't obviously participate in any conversations that revolve around the application that I had before you.
Carolyn, Reed, Pete, thank you for being here. And again, this is, as Jack said, this is to provide some context for our discussion next month and to give us a chance to explore some options as we do that. Thank you.
Okay, I'll start it with the first slide, which you can see is, this slide indicates the area and populations of Williamsburg, James City County, and York Counties. The populations are shown from the 2010 census and from the 2013 estimates from the Weldon Cooper Center, and you can see those up on this slide. For York County, the population increased a little bit from 65,464 to 66,955. For Williamsburg, 1468 to 14893, and from James City, 6709 to 70,231. As you can see from this, Williamsburg has 10% of the population and 3% of the land area, which begs the question you had, Mr. Mayor, about addressing the housing as a regional issues for all three jurisdictions. Affordable housing in the city is based on spending not more than 30% of the household income on housing. For a household income of 50 to 80% of the median income, which is $70,600, this equates to a purchase price of $150,000 to $250,000. These charts show the 2012 housing in affordable range and housing values for the three jurisdictions. The numbers do not include apartments, they just include single-family, duplexes, condos, and townhouses. Slide five, this is a graph of the previous chart, which shows the 2012 figures for the housing in the affordable range as a percentage of the total broken down into housing below four price points. As you can see, the city has more affordable units in the percentage of the total than the two adjacent jurisdictions, although less units in absolute numbers because of our land area and our population, we have less in the absolute numbers. This slide is a graph of the previous chart, which shows the 2012 figures for the housing in the affordable range as a percentage of the total broken down into the five affordable price ranges. The city has more adjacent, more than the adjacent jurisdictions for the under than $200,000 range, and the adjacent jurisdictions have more than the city in the $200,000-plus This slide is the 2010 census chart, which indicates the owner-occupied versus renter-occupied housing for the city, the two adjacent jurisdictions, Hampton Roads and the state. As you can see, the city has the highest percentage of renters compared to the two adjacent jurisdictions, Hampton Roads area and the state. The updated figures for the city indicate 45% owner-occupied and 55% renter-occupied, with the two adjacent jurisdictions being basically the same. This is a list of apartment complexes in the city arranged by addresses. We have 27 apartment complexes on the list with a total of 1,885 units. As the list notes, we have the largest number of units along Merrimack Trail and the Monticello and Mount Vernon and U-Hope Road area. This is the same list arranged by year, which is interesting to see the history of apartments in the city. In the 1930s, 40s, and 50s, four apartment complexes were constructed with a total of 151 units. These were in the downtown Jamestown Road area with one on York Street. In the 60s and 70s, we had a booming units with eight complexes being constructed with a total of 942 units. Downtown, it was the conversion of the King and Queen Motel into apartments, Colliotown, Parkway, Merrimack Crossing, or Merrimack Trail, and the Monticello, Julie Anne, and Spring Road apartments in the Mount Vernon Road area. In the 80s and 90s, eight complexes were constructed with a total of 196 units. Four of the complexes were the Housing Authority units around town, with Clinton Gardens and Mount Vernon and smaller complexes around town. In the last 10 years, we've had seven complexes are proposed with a total of 596 units. High Street, Tribe Square, Portapath Trace, City Loss, and Griffin Arms are completed with Aurora Apartments and Prince George Commons due for completion this year. Of the 27 complexes shown, I'd like to note that five are student rentals totaling 261 units, with 1,624 units remaining in the city. The next two slides indicate the rental units and the rents for the three jurisdictions from the American Community Servier five-year estimates. The figures include all types of units, including apartments, single-family, duplexes, townhomes, and condos. This slide indicates the number of rental units by rent. Most of our rental units are in the $500 to just under the $1,500 range, as you can see in this slide. This slide indicates the rents as a percentage of total occupied rental housing. Again, we have the most in the $500 to just under $1,500 range. We have more in the under $500 range than our neighbors, but the adjacent jurisdictions have considerably more in the over than $1,500 range. This is a list of our hotels in the city. We have 42 on the list with a total of 3,882 rooms. Since we are investigating possible changes to the B2 district, this list highlights the number of hotels in the B2 district, which totals 2,338 rooms and 27 properties. With that, I'll turn it over to Joe DiMillo to talk about the first column on the potential housing initiatives.
Thank you, Carolyn. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I'm gonna speak for a few minutes on the first column of the worksheet before you on the expanding existing public housing, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Tuttle to talk about the second column. The city and the housing authority are focusing on expanding existing public housing in two particular areas, senior housing and one-bedroom accessible units. The 2015 and 16 GIOs include a blatant building redevelopment initiative to determine the feasibility of redeveloping the blatant property to replace the existing 38 senior units and to provide additional senior housing units on the site. The city has been working with community planning partners on a Phase One feasibility of this concept. The feasibility study, this Phase One, will be presented at the February Housing Authority Board meeting. In addition to senior housing, the Human Services Department has also been looking at trying to determine how we better meet the demand for one-bedroom accessible units as regards to public housing. We are currently exploring how we better meet this demand at our three existing public housing sites within the city. So these are the two initiatives that we currently have underway, but they're not really the focus of our discussion this afternoon. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Tuttle to talk about the non-transient transitional column on the worksheet. Mr. Tuttle?
All right, thanks, Jody. The second column deals with a concept that really relates more directly to the proposal that has been tabled until February, and that is to address the need for affordable housing and workforce housing, not all within the context of what you've already heard of how much the city does, but to do that by allowing the adaptive reuse of an existing hotel somewhere in the B2 zone in the city for this transitional or non-transient use, meaning that a hotel typically serves a transient resident. These would acknowledge, would be acknowledged to be non-transient residents using the hotel. And in order to do that, the suggestion is that a new zoning category be created for the use of all or part yet to be determined of an existing hotel, that there be a provision in this that would deal with how would this property revert to commercial zoning, back to the B2, at the owner's option, at what time could that be done, under what process? That would need to be in the details of this proposal. How would this proposal link to services provided both by the city's Human Services Department as well as other nonprofits in the greater Williamsburg area, so that what would be the services provided to the population in this property? And the concept is that it would provide primarily efficiency units and one-bedroom units, that there would be a limit on the number of persons per unit, and that building code requirements would need to be met in the reuse of the building for this purpose. Finally, that there would be included in a management plan. There certainly are management plans for how we do hotels and motels, but this is something new and different, so how would it be managed would need to be in the plan. And finally, the third, the last bullet, is that how would you select which property in the city in order to do this, assuming you were only going to do one, and if you were going to do more than one, you still have the same issue of making a selection? And the concept is that that be done on a competitive basis, that the city would open up, would put out a request for proposals, allow any owner of a B2 hotel property to propose the use of their property for this purpose. It would be evaluated on the basis of the type of criteria that you see here, as well as the suggestions, the desires of the property making the proposal. And then that would in turn come back to City Council and to the Planning Commission with the recommendation that the property be rezoned for that use with these various conditions. So this is the conceptually where we as the city staff are going and looking at bringing back to you a recommendation as early as February, but it does have implications for zoning changes. And so now what I want to do is turn it next over to Reed to talk about column three and what this means for B2 zoning, and then I'll finish up with column four, and then we're gonna be quiet and you all can discuss it. Reed?
The B2 zoning district allows residential uses, multifamily condominiums, and townhouses, provided that not more than 67% of the total floor area on the site is devoted to residential uses. So the first bullet says, talks about restricting existing housing provisions in the B2 district. That could mean not allowing any housing at all, taking that out of the zoning ordinance, that would require change in a comprehensive plan. Or it could be to change the wording to be more limited or more restrictive for what type of housing is provided, or to say specifically that any housing in the B2 district has to be new construction and can't be conversion of existing buildings. So those are options that are out there in looking at housing in the B2, and that's sort of related to what Jack had just talked about in the non-transient housing in the B2 district, too. The other zoning issue is to look at the limit of stay in the zoning ordinance. It was at one point 30 days, it was increased years ago to 90 days. It could be decreased back to 30 days, and that's a limitation that some of our surrounding jurisdictions have put in. This could be coupled with exceptions in the ordinance to allow for longer stays. Presently, there is no 90-day limits when you have a suite-type unit that has a full kitchen in it, essentially. But that doesn't apply, obviously, if you have people wanting, that are in the area for legitimate purposes, that might want to stay several months in a motel that does not have full kitchen facilities. So that's something that could be looked at and paired with reducing the length of stay to thirty days. So that covers the zoning issues.
Thanks, Reed. And finally, just there's some other issues in related to these initiatives we think are important to get out on the floor for discussion. We have talked about the concept of inclusionary zoning, whether that is put into the ordinance which requires a certain percentage of low or moderate income housing as part of a rezoning to any property for residential use, or as in bullet two there, taking within existing zones, giving the option to owners to increase their density of housing with a certain percentage of low rental units. These are concepts which are used in different ways around the country, have been studied here and looked at on several different occasions, but have not yet been incorporated into our ordinances. And of course, so that until that were done, the question remains, is that a good idea for us? How might it look if we were to go that direction? The third bullet is realizing, and this is particularly in light of what Carolyn's briefing showed, about the relatively small portion of housing which the city provides simply because of our smaller size and smaller population, that as much as possible, what we do, we want to coordinate that with our two county partners and with the nonprofit organizations which are leading in the housing issue, the United Way, the Salvation Army, and Peter Wallantish is here because he works very closely with those agencies, as well as being our public housing supervisor with the Housing Division being part of his department. So Mr. Wallantish is connected to all these issues, these issues in both of those ways. And the objective is, what can we do on the city side that also sets the table in some way to increase housing opportunities outside the city as well? So those are some of our thoughts. Those are some of the issues we see, the direction we are heading as a city staff and coming back to you next month, and we're looking to get some feedback from you now.
Okay, terrific. Now, thank you all for the time and effort you put into this. This is useful to provide some context for these discussions, and I think good information to Carolyn, in particular, you and Reed, and Pete, thank you very much for this. Paul, questions?
Two questions. Ms. Murphy? Do we have any information, data, numbers on how the city's percentage of renter-occupied housing as a percentage of total housing, how that compares to other cities of similar size surrounded by counties? I mean, just by it seems to me just by definition, a city's going to be more urban and have more rental housing on it, and you end up with more subdivision-style housing in counties. So I...
And then how many of those rentals are student rentals?
Yeah. Right, because I think of Charlottesville, and that might not be the best example, but they strike me as a city that is... Anyway, I was just curious.
We have figures in our comprehensive plan that compares Williamsburg with other college towns in the state and in other states. For example, we're at sixty-four for looking at... Well, this is a breakdown, we have a breakdown, single-family, duplex, and multifamily, and in that breakdown, we have thirty-six percent duplex and multifamily dwellings compared with forty-three percent in Charlottesville, forty-four percent in Harrisonburg, fifty-five percent in Blacksburg, fifty-three percent in Fredericksburg. So...
And in all fairness, the first three of those, the schools are much, much larger, and they don't, I would imagine they don't, they have a lot more students living on campus than we do.
But we have another chart dealing with housing tenure in college towns. That's the renter-owner split, and there, as Carolyn mentioned, our latest figure is forty-five percent owner-occupied, which equates to fifty-five percent rental. And there, Radford is fifty-eight percent rental, Charlottesville's fifty-nine percent rental, Fredericksburg's sixty-two percent rental, Harrisonburg is sixty-three percent, and Blacksburg is seventy-two percent. So we're in the lower end of the range for college towns in the state. But I think looking at this figure, as you can see, it's typical that a college town would have more rentals.
And Mr. Nestor, I think this next question's for you. The discussion that was had, as you mentioned, a few or several years ago, to change the transient occupancy limit from thirty days to ninety days, was that part of the J-1 student visa conversation?
Yes, that came up with that, and we have a special section in the ordinance pertaining to J-1 students.
And is that still, by any stretch, an issue in this community?
Well, it's not, in terms of numbers, it is not what it was seven, eight years ago. But there's, and that pushed us to go to the ninety days, but there are other ways to accommodate that, where we can still deal with as an exception to a thirty-day rule for those that are here on a work visa for a ninety-day period or a hundred-and-twenty day period. So there's a way to get to it without making it a general...
Because if we did pursue that change from ninety to thirty, want to make sure we take that into account so we don't ping pong back and forth on this issue. You know, the economy rebounds, tourism grows, all of a sudden more students coming on the visas and that. Okay, those are my questions.
Other questions? Judy?
I'm still struck by the issue that I've had all along, which is that workforce housing and transitional housing are not the same thing. And it seems to me we need to deal with both of those. I mean, I think this is a great outline, and I really, it gives us a lot to talk about, but I'm still worried about, and I think this maybe goes away towards looking at some of the workforce housing issues. You know, the example people keep giving me is the chef who needs a efficiency somewhere where he can sleep for his twelve hours that he's not cooking, you know, kind of thing. But I still, and Peter, maybe this is, we still have this huge homeless issue and the transitional housing issue, and I'm not sure any of this gets to that, really. I don't know. I mean...
Well, first of all, you're correct. You have different issues that overlap. I want to emphasize that.
Yeah, well, because the people are working who are homeless, I understand that.
There's no clear demarcation line.
Yeah.
From what, and I just want to point out, our job, as you all know, is to deal with individuals on a case-by-case basis. So that's the information I have. And to put it simply, each case is different from the other. So you have two hundred cases, you're going to have two hundred different scenarios. But what we, when you start talking about, I think that the hard part here is going from A level, let's say you're homeless or in a motel, to B level, which is something more of housing that's more stable and permanent and affordable. That doesn't mean at that point it's a one-year lease, for example. That's quite a gap to jump there. So I think what Mr. Tuttle was outlining is a plan that closes the gaps and makes it more realistic and affordable for people to transition into ultimately more stable, permanent housing. And everyone's needs are different. You mentioned the cook, you mentioned that. You know, and I want to point out the people in the workforce housing category, again, it's more complex than the actual terminology, but you know, you have a lot of people who are making, let's say, family of four up to forty-five thousand, that are considered in need, as you well know, way, way above the minimum wage. So that's a whole population in there that in some ways this will also address, because again, it helps them to build slowly in terms of financial stability, et cetera. And I think it's certainly a step in the right direction.
Thank you.
Yeah, following up on that, I think, you know, I could conceive of, you know, maybe doing this with two properties where, and either they're separated or mixed, and I would prefer mixed, but that you really have two different needs that we're trying to address here, and what's the best way to address those needs, both for what we're calling here non-transient transitional housing, but also workforce housing. And as you said, they overlap, but there are also some differences between those. So how do we think creatively about what's the best way to set up a mechanism that deals with that? And with the understanding of the city alone can't solve this problem, that sort of whatever we do, we have to work with our neighbors and see if we can create a model or mechanism that they could see as a way of going forward with, so that we begin to deal with this as a region rather than as a single locality. So I think that's important. But I guess I'd like you guys to think a little bit more about sort of how could you see sort of a property that would serve these needs? Is it best to serve them separately? Is it best to serve them together? And if so, sort of, and what's the extent of the level that you think is appropriate for the city to go forward with this? You know, is it, you know, is it sort of four hundred units in the community would make a big dent in this, and then what's the fair share for the city in this? So those types of questions and some answers to those would be helpful for me to think about this as well.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the only clear answer I could give you is I don't have that answer.
No, I have it.
Let me tell you why. I will qualify that statement. As I started out saying, it's a very complex issue. Right now, and again, just to point out, the, we are a microcosm, I've said this many times, you've heard it, of what's happening in the rest of the state and the rest of the country. We're not unique. We have some issues that are exacerbated because our configuration, being a college town, everything else, tourist destination, et cetera. The real trick is to, well, let me start with the first one. The need of people in economic crisis, not only here but nationally, is almost insatiable. The minute you fill, let's say, to use your figure, four hundred, you'll have another four hundred on your hands. So one has to be realistic about how you start and what the capacity is within your own community, given its size, configuration, economics, and all that business. So I think this is, you know, moving in the direction of closing those gaps, rather than them being so far apart where people are not making it, whatever you create, as the gap closes, it is more affordable, it's not the year lease necessarily, it's not the thirty days, you know, something in between that allows people small stepping stones. I think if I understand it, that's the objective. The devil's in the details. How you go about that is going to take more discussion and more work, both, not just on the staff level, but on your level as well.
And now, I'm separating this from sort of the very short-term crisis-type housing that some part of homelessness comes as a result of a crisis, and somebody needs to be put off for a day or two or a week or something, and that's different than this. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Yes, and what we have done for years in this greater community, in the historic tunnel, is we have utilized, again, we're unique, Newport News is a different set of... What we've utilized here for years is what we call the scattered site model approach, meaning a natural resource here is all the motels that Ms. Murphy just referenced. That's there. It's available to be used, again, with the understanding it's the short-term crises. So as a result, we've utilized all the motels that would work with us and partner agencies, public and private, who would give us the affordable rates so that people could deal with the short-term problems. It's then up to other entities such as ours, as you know, we have an outreach office, to work on the stabilization plan. I think Mr. Tuttle referenced that. You have families in that workforce category, in the blue collar category, that are making ten, twelve, fifteen dollars an hour with families, that are going to be in crisis from time to time. That's where we come in. My point is that if you have the type of housing that complements what we do and we can work with, that's the best combination. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, no, that's helpful. This is to go in a little bit different track for a second, back to the public housing part. We actually do public housing with our apartment units in the Blatant Building. We're the only one in the jurisdiction that does that. The other jurisdictions deal with that through what title?
Well, yeah, that's a good question and point. There are three public housing authorities on the peninsula. We, the city, are one, Newport News is the other, and Hamford is the other. York, Jame City, and so on have what's called housing offices, and they deal with a number of areas, particularly the one that has been referenced, is Section Eight housing. Now, Section Eight is, again, specific to the individual. If the individual qualifies, and there are federal Section Eight housing vouchers available, let's say I qualified, and I happened to get one, and by the way, there's a long waiting list for those, I then am able to go anywhere to any landlord and use that Section Eight voucher as a subsidy-type program, and landlords accept that. We have landlords in the city and in the surrounding counties that accept Section Eight. That's specific to the individual, and that is not the same as the public housing authorities. There are three authorities on the peninsula, and I'm simplifying, so they do other things, but that's the...
That's helpful. In our complexes, we have a variety, we have one, two, three, four, and five-bedroom apartments, if I remember it correctly. Is that, is the demand for those larger sizes still the same as it was when they were built? Or should we be considering converting some of those into smaller units, or is that even feasible? What's your sense about that?
Do you want to address that?
Jody, you may.
Sure, and I'll start, and Peter, you can chime in. What we have found with the public housing sites, with our three multifamily sites, is that there's a greater demand for more of those smaller units, those one- and two-bedrooms, in particular, those one-bedroom units that are more accessible, especially for those with disabilities. And so when I briefly talked about that at the beginning of the presentation, that's one of the things that we were looking at and working with staff on, is to determine how do we better meet that demand that we're seeing, and how do we do that at our current multifamily sites? So I think the demand that we've seen are going towards more of the smaller units as compared to some of the larger units. And Peter, if you have some...
Well, yeah, what you've got is that Blatant Building at the moment, which is senior density, occupy it, are thirty-eight one-bedroom units, and that's where we have the one-bedrooms, effectively speaking. We don't have them at the other three. There are four sites, a hundred and four units. Thirty-eight are Blatant, they're one-bedroom. Now, to tie in the discussion with the increasing need of the senior population, let's say over the next five, ten years, all right, what we were looking at is doing two things, is providing, as openings occur at the other three sites, reconfiguring them to one-bedroom slash handicapped accessible, for example, and making those available, which is again part of HUD requirement that we have as part of public housing. The largest concentration of, so you have thirty-eight one-bedroom units, then most of the others are two, three, and four, so you have that curve. Five, there's only one or two. So, you know, it's like the large, there's only, I think we were capped at one or two of those. And so really, the need is, falls mostly into the... And so, really, the need is, falls mostly into the, let's say you could say easily three-bedroom scenario, if you have a kid, have a small family, and so on. And right now, that's where we should be with that. When you get to the five-bedroom, you know, I think, and again, as the income of the individual increases, those, the four- and five-bedroom families, if you can match it up with income, there are ones who could get out and get regular market-rate apartments eventually. Because as your income increases, your rent increases, you know, there's a threshold there. But I think we're right where we should be in that two-to-four category, which is the largest majority.
I guess the question is, should we, longer term, be thinking about, is it even feasible to think about converting some of those larger units into smaller units and reconfiguring? And are there HUD funds available for that? Or would that be something we would have to do, or what?
I would just add to the need for additional senior housing. That's one of the issues that we're looking at with the Phase 1 study that we're doing for the Blatant property. And so, we haven't gotten that completed study yet, but we anticipate being able to present that to the Housing Authority Board Council in February. That can speak a little bit more to, I think, meeting that demand as regards to senior housing, that one-bedroom unit, as well as meeting that demand for those one-bedroom or accessible units at our multifamily sites.
Mr. Mayor, I will add that a lot of people don't know this. We're fixed at 104 public housing units. We're not going to get any more. So anything else that we do is a city initiative, to go back to Ms. Newton's comment, of seniors that are, you know, need more affordable housing, but they're not public housing-qualified per se, that's like workforce housing. There's going to be an increasing need for seniors that don't have a lot of money, that, and if you remember the hotel now that was on Monticello and Richmond Road, most of those seniors were in the category that we're talking about, they were paying six, seven, at the top, they were paying $600, $700 a month in that affordable senior housing. And I think we're attempting to replicate something similar to that.
Got you. Okay, thank you. Carolyn, one final question. On the apartment complexes, you showed, particularly those that have rents in the lower two or three categories, do we have any data, or can we get data on vacancy rates in those? I mean, are there units available? And if so, sort of.
I generally look at the apartment complexes on their websites.
Right.
And just about all of them, Merrimack Trail and Mount Vernon Avenue, had vacancy rates because they had information on their websites. I haven't called up anybody, but I could possibly do that.
That might be useful information.
Just their apartment complexes?
Yeah. And any other questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
One of the, and this is not as much about this broader conversation, goes a little bit back to the, well, not a little bit, goes directly back to the conversation we had at the meeting last month. And one of the concerns I had, actually, my primary concern about the application that was before us was, what are the mechanisms, if we decide to go forward with the SUP as presented, what are the mechanisms that we have, if we choose to employ them, to put some kind of cap on the conversion of properties under that SUP process from hotel to residential? Is it, I don't see anything here related to that. Am I missing it?
No, because this is assuming that a new zone would be used in lieu of using a special use permit process under the B-2.
Okay. But if we did use the special use permit process under the B-2, do we have any idea what those mechanisms could be? I know, Michelle, you talked briefly about it, you changed the zoning definition, and that would be one way of doing it, but is that the only tool that we would have at our disposal? Do we have?
I'm not sure I fully understand.
I guess the question is, if we, if we.
Let's say we can, we as a community agree, we could have, we're talking about potentially with the SUP that is still being considered, the addition or conversion of 60 hotel rooms to 40 rental units. Let's say we decided the city could absorb, or wanted to absorb, or thought it was a good idea for a multitude of reasons, to have up to 150 rental units, or 100, or 75. Is there any way to do that, other than just waiting till we hit a threshold and then changing the zone?
We'll give that some thought.
Okay.
That's a good city attorney question.
I think that council can have in their mind what the appropriate number is. If you get a special use permit in excess of that number, you have that number in mind as this is what's in the best interest of the community and the zone. But I think ultimately, you're going to want to amend the zoning ordinance to reflect that and not have it just as an unfixed policy somewhere.
So is there a way to put into the zoning ordinance some number like that? Okay, that's very helpful.
And it would probably need to be backed up with something in the comprehensive plan too, setting forth the city's efficient policy, which is then implemented by the zoning ordinance.
Okay. I just want to say, there's a lot of information here.
Yes.
And I'm not sure I've absorbed all yet. And I kind of, I do wish we'd had the opportunity to get this at a work session and think about it for a couple of days. But I think, I'm going to have to think more about all of this, or I have much more to say.
Well, you know, it could be that this could be another, an issue for the retreat. We could do it at the February work session, come back to this before the February.
That would be helpful.
Because, again, there's, this is a, you know, we're in a process, and trying to think about things and think about what's best for the community, and how do we best meet the needs that the community has. So I think we really are sort of, to some extent, inventing as we go. So these discussions, I think, are really important in that context. But yes, there is a lot of information, and I really do appreciate all the work that's gone into this by Carolyn and Reed and Pete, I know Jody and Jack have been involved, and others as well, but thank you. Any further questions at this time? So I'll anticipate that, well, either, depending on sort of what the retreat agenda looks like, this could be a follow-up, short discussion there, maybe a follow-up discussion at the February work session, and then come back to the issue at the February council meeting.
Okay.
Is that okay? Okay, thank you. Let's see, okay. Our next agenda item, city attorney reports, I believe we have none. Thank you guys again for.
There's nothing.
Schedule meetings, Jack?
Yes, sir. I don't think I have anything in particular to point out, other than what we already have, and that is the council retreat on the 31st.
Any questions? No unfinished business?
I just would like to, I have one thing, I don't know if it's unfinished business or not, but I would like to thank whoever fixed the cords under here. I was afraid I was going to upset the entire thing, and they're gone. So thank you, whoever did that.
Probably starts with Jerry and goes to somebody, the IT people.
Whoever it went to, thank you.
Sure, convey our thanks to them for that. New business, I'd like to today announce three appointments to the beautification awards committee. Those are Leslie Bowie, Robert Grossman, and Nina Mustard. And I've spoken with all of those, they've agreed to serve. We will have a meeting later this month with staff to talk about the process and all. And I've also indicated to them that there is some interest in having discussions with the ARB about the possibility of an architectural award, and that's something that we'll do as the spring moves forward. Any other new business? That brings us to open forum. I have a number of speakers' cards. The first is John Johnston. Mr. Johnson, welcome.
Thank you. John Michael Johnson, 107 Governor Berkeley Road. I don't know if this is the appropriate forum to discuss what happened with Agenda 4 C-2, but if so, I'd like to talk to you for a minute about it.
Yeah, this is, you can speak to any matter you wish.
Okay, sometimes they don't allow you to speak to other agendas. Why wasn't the public allowed to speak while you were still discussing the item?
This was not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
No, it's, and, you know, typically, we have a work session the Monday before the council meeting, and many times, that's a time that we use to talk about things. Because the Monday session followed immediately on the holiday, I didn't feel it was fair to staff to sort of have a meeting. But typically, in a public hearing situation, there is a time for the public to speak. This was a recommendation from staff to council. And I have a feeling that staff will come back to us with other recommendations as well.
Yeah, I certainly think there's alternatives that y'all could have discussed today that weren't discussed.
Exactly.
I personally, if it came down to it, be willing to pay extra money for the installation. But certainly, if speed bumps are an alternative, I would welcome stop signs at that intersection y'all discussed before. Anything to slow people down, I have a two-year-old kid, I have another one on the way. Your staff said 15% of people exceed the speed limit there. That's too many. If you have a two-year-old kid, all you have to do is split second, you know, they're outside of your guard, and somebody going down the road, like I saw the other morning, at 7:30 in the morning, 40 miles an hour down that road, approximately, on a cellphone, with kids waiting for school buses, that's a bad thing. And I really think something needs to be done, and I think it should, some action should be taken today and not put off until next month. Well, thank you.
Thank you, and we will follow up on that. Next is Mr. John Whitley.
I'm at 31, Irving's Court, O. S. O.
Next speaker's card I have is Gary Shelley. Welcome, Mr. Shelley.
Thank you. I am Gary Shelley, I live at 205 Indian Springs Road. Investigators who work for groups such as hospitals, or the National Transportation Safety Board, will tell you that there is seldom one single cause of a preventable deadly accident. There is always a string of events, or inactions by individuals, who should be responsible for safety, that contribute to the tragedy. Their goal is to improve their systems so that such events will never happen again. Today, we live in a stand-your-ground environment, where citizens use weapons for self-protection, whether the danger they feel is real or perceived. Over the course of the past several months, a parade of citizens has approached you and respectfully told you of multiple illegal entries onto their properties by city personnel. They have asked you for responses to their concerns. You have steadfastly ignored their pleas. On behalf of these citizens, and on behalf of myself as a property owner, I've come before you on five occasions. I've asked you specific questions, including why, how many times, and on what other properties has the city trespassed. I've asked, how is it possible that the city manager was not made aware that a complaint was made to the police against one of his employees? Today, I come to you once again, for whatever good it might do, to put on record that I want answers to these questions. In October, Mr. Philip Christopherson submitted to you a letter written by his wife, Ms. Wanda Christopherson. Mrs. Christopherson wrote that she is an eight-year resident of the city, and she is a grandmother of eight. She wrote of the horrific, life-altering ordeal she experienced as a victim of a particularly brutal armed home invasion. She specifically asked for a response from you, but she has been ignored. I am blessed to have Mrs. Christopherson as a tenant. Leesburg would be a better place if we had more people like her. One cannot help but admire the way that she has dealt with her experience and gone on to live her life. When Mr. Christopherson spoke to you in October, he told you of being startled by a city employee lurking outside of their bedroom window. Before I leave today, I have Mrs. Christopherson's permission to share with you something she told me. One, and now is how to shoot straight. You just might want to accept some responsibility and remind city personnel to abide by the law. Let's an accident investigation someday be required here. Thank you.
Mr. Tuttle, you've investigated this particular complaint.
Yes, sir, I have. I have a few comments to make. First of all, with regard to earlier accusations, Mr. Shelley, you can have a seat. It's okay. With regard to earlier matters that Mr. Shelley brought up before city council in the past concerning a Boundary Street property which he owns, and in response to that, I sent Mr. Shelley a detailed letter, this was sometime in the fall, addressing all of the allegations, where I could find any misstep by city employee that was acknowledged and reported in that letter. And so, with regard to the Boundary Street situation, which was again brought up here, Mr. Shelley's been given a full response, and I am, if this is still an issue with him or any of the tenants in the past, I'm happy to meet with them. What Mr. Shelley, I think, fails to understand is a few key things. That city employees in the Code's Compliance Division, as well as the rest of the city, work for the city manager and their department head, which reports to the city manager. I am termed accountable to the whole of city council. So when Mr. Shelley or anyone else comes and attacks the mayor for not doing what the mayor should do, it's a failure to understand the council-manager system. I am responsible for the actions of city employees, and if I fail in that regard in the eyes of the city council as a whole, they are to hold me accountable. So when a citizen comes and directs that personally to the mayor, it's a simple misunderstanding of how our form of government works and who's responsible. With regard to Mr. Christopherson issue, the, there have been, in the case of that residence, the one on Boundary Street, and several other of Mr. Shelley's properties, there have been repeated violations of the property maintenance code over the years that have resulted in city inspections of those properties. There have been efforts to get those violations corrected. The files are, on property after property, are that thick. With the failure of Mr. Shelley to respond to those complaints, to correct the violation, and resulting in multiple re-inspections with great care, and if we have ever, if the property inspector has ever gone beyond the perfectly, a legitimate role of the inspector in terms of where they can set their feet in doing that reinspection, it's our job to do that and do that right. And I know one case, one case where we overstepped that, under the, some five or six years ago now, in the case of the Boundary Street case. I'm unaware of any other. The, and I don't know what incident was referred to where the Mrs. Christopherson saw people on her property that she felt that startled her. I do know that there was a visit to that property with the circuit court judge, the city attorney, Mr. Shelley, because the judge, in one of the many times Mr. Shelley's been taken to court because of his repeated property maintenance violations and his failure to respond to those, where there was, actually, court was held on that property that he owns about those violations. So these repeated comments made to council have been totally out of context with regard to the enforcement actions and the reason for these visits of city inspections because of the violations and the repeated failure to correct those violations until finally taken to court and forced to do so by a judge. So it's really gotten beyond, beyond anything reasonable to continue to hear these die tribes month after month, when, if Mr. Shelley has an issue, when he has an issue, he needs to bring it to me. He has never set foot in my office. I spoke to him years ago on another matter, when he was complaining about Harrison Avenue and attacking the council on that, what the situation was. I told him to come see me, and that door is always open. He has never taken advantage of those simple administrative remedies to deal with his issues before bringing them here and doing it publicly. And he needs to start doing that and stop this ridiculous behavior.
Thank you. Thank you. I have another speaker's card, Wanda Christ Christopherson. Wanda, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your comments, sir. My name is Wanda Christopherson. I live at 602 Capitoline Road. What I have to say is not ridiculous. This is a letter that I wrote in October. My husband brought it with me, with him, when he came, when he came and saw you and talked to you. And I'm here to kind of put a face on that letter, to make it more real. I know that there are times when inspections need to be made and access needs to be granted. I have no issue with that. But I know that it has to be done properly. I know that, you know, like you said before, there has been a time where you know specifically that somebody stepped outside the bounds. It's not so much, it's the way that it creates an environment. And in my experience, I don't have any information or knowledge of other properties or what their situations are, or whether or not there were repairs made, or what the litigations were. That is not what I'm here for. But I wanted to clear that up since I'm kind of coming on after Gary and after your statement. So if you don't mind, I can read my letter. And that way, I know that everybody has a personal feel to that. I'll ask, I guess, do you remember the letter?
Yes, we read it and discussed it. So thank you. And feel free to read it if you'd like.
Okay. Well, with that being said, and I will read the letter, with that being said, what was the result?
Mr. Tuttle, do you want to respond to that?
I do not have, because the letter did not indicate a time and place. So I do not know what particular incident or what day that was being discussed in that letter. The-
It wasn't a particular day. I apologize for interrupting. There's not a particular day that is, it was, it's several occasions. I don't have dates. My husband has more clarity on that, and he can certainly give more detail.
Scott, I would be happy to meet with you and go over that in detail. I'll do it at your convenience, and we would very much like to do that.
Because, like I said, I reached out with the letter. I guess my question was, with that being said, and you feel for my situation, why did you not reach back to me and like just let me know, clarify, revisit what the policies and procedures are so that I know what to expect? Because a lot of what has happened, you know, triggers things from, with certain people who've had certain experiences in their life. And without, you know, like I said, with proper notification, you know, just, you know, not just showing up at a side window with a camera, you know what I'm saying? It's like, it really is discerning.
Unfortunately, there really wasn't much in the letter that was specific. And Mr. Shelley, immediately after Mr. Christopherson's comments, followed up with his remarks and sort of took it, took the matter over himself. And so if, and so I apologize to you if we did not come back directly to Mr. Christopherson. It looked like Mr. Shelley was representing you in this matter, and if we took that incorrectly, I'm sorry. But I'd be happy to meet with you and with your husband.
I would, I do need to have some type of response because without, with me kind of pouring myself out there and not giving anything back in return, I felt that it fell on deaf ears, and it made me feel that there was maybe a lack of concern for my situation. I'm just one person. Like I said, I'm not involved in any of the other things that are going on or any type of relationship that's occurred up until this point. I can just tell you how the things that have happened with me and my husband have made us feel. He was actually specifically startled. I don't know what date that was, with somebody at the window taking pictures. I understand that, you know, the city has, is allowed to have access into certain things. I mean, I'm not, I'm a renter. I'm not the owner. So I would think that, you know, that the owner would be contacted if there was some type of violation and that, you know, they would let the tenant know that, hey, the city's going to be coming by, you know, just so that I know the heads up because it lets me have a little bit of fear. I'm not paranoid or anything like that, but I, I am definitely, with my past experience, I'm aware and careful. And I'm very clear as to my surroundings, and I'm a private person. And so to have someone come up, if you're on an official inspection, then, you know, I guess, I feel that we should be notified ahead of time so that it's not just like coming on the property and to the side of the house. We should be like somebody coming up to the front door, identify, badge, and with a reason. And I would certainly help you in any way I could. But I think that my, in my situation, the things that I've gone through, I think, is to maybe make a clear awareness of how it's done. If there's a reason for it, I mean, then there's, you know, documentation for it. I understand. However, I feel that the way that it's being handled, that I'm, I've been getting caught in the crossfire a little bit as far as just feeling uneasy as far as, you know, there could be, if I hear rustling by the window or something, could it be okay? Is it the city or is it somebody else? It's like, I don't know. You know what I mean? We don't know these days. It's very, I love Williamsburg. I've lived here for years. I've volunteered. I've been a hard worker. I'm in the Republic. It's like, I just really want there to be an awareness because I think that there's not an understanding and maybe there's more of a relationship that was built before I made aware of this because listening to some of this has made me aware of that there's more of a dynamic in the background that I haven't been experienced good. However, I feel that in, as a resident and as a renter, whether I'm renting or buying, I feel that I should have some notice and not feel like I have to live in fear that there will be little things that'll trigger things from years ago. And I know I'm not the only person who's experienced a bad situation. And praise God that I've moved on from that and been able to live a life safe. And since then, however, I do feel that this, the way this has come about has been wrong. And maybe that, that there's been some cloudiness there of maybe of trying to get to a result and not realizing that sometimes the way it's done can affect others in different ways that maybe you wouldn't have been last before. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
It does.
Jack, maybe we can provide her with the city policy so she understands what exactly the policy is and what our employees know the policy is, and you will as well. And again, I think back to your point, the only particular circumstance we know is when Judge Powell took the courtroom there to look at the property.
And like I said, with the background that I'm kind of hearing today, I almost, it's almost making me feel like I wasn't responded to because I'm connected to, I'm kind of put in a bubble because there's a situation already happening. And so there's a cloudiness there as far as seeing the little things that it's affecting. And you have to look at the little things as well as the big picture. And so the lack of response from my letter, because that took a lot for me to write. I don't share that with everybody, so for me to stand here and talk about this, y'all know who I'm talking about, and y'all do too, pretty much. And, but it took a lot for me to do that and to not get a response in any way, whether there were dates or specifics. I was trying to give you the picture of the idea of how the process has happened in our experience that's caused, you know, negative and uneasiness in our home. And I hope that that makes sense. Maybe, I think anyone would feel that way. I mean, usually, you know, I mean, when people are going to be on your property. And it's one thing to come up to the door knocking on the door, and it's another thing just, you know, you hear some rustling, you know? And so I appreciate your response now. However, if I wasn't standing before you today, would I have ever heard anything from you?
Well, I'm very surprised, the first time I've ever met you. And the letter was delivered to city council at an open forum session.
Right.
And I would have had to pull that back out and have sent a response back to you. It went indirectly through both your husband and Mr. Shelley to the city council. In retrospect, I would have pulled it out and communicated directly to you, and I apologize, already have, and I will for that. But let's take it forward from here, and let's have that meeting and go through the situation. And we can go over to the, as much history as you want to, and talk about the future as well.
Like I said, I do appreciate that, but I do want to say that it's, I just felt like it fell flat, like my, I put my heart out there-
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And it fell flat. And, and, and that's what makes me feel like it was kind of like, because I could tell by, let's be private, I'm scared, by tone, body language, speech, that there's an animosity there. And that I think is clouding the judgment, and you're putting everything in a bubble and maybe focusing on, focusing on the right things, however, not the whole picture. And maybe that's why I'm here, is to kind of bring out what else can, what else it can affect with those policies and procedures when they aren't followed. And like I said, even if I had gotten some response with the regulations so that I could myself, you know, read them for myself, okay, well, what is to be expected? You know what I mean, when, you know, when inspection happens? I mean, if you have to inspect, I'm sorry, inspect a place, you know, I mean, that's perfectly fine, but I know that there's a policy for that. And I know that there's procedures, and I know that it's not anything that would make somebody feel fearful. And if you don't mind, can I read the letter?
Please do.
I'm an eight-year tenant at 602 Capitoline Road, a Virginia native, a twelve-year resident of James City County in Williamsburg, and a grandmother of three. I prefer Mimi, not Grandma. My husband and I are hard-working, tax-paying, blue-collar, law-abiding, and dedicated voters. I am pleased with the respectful nature to create a safe environment as all repairs and maintenance have been just a phone call away to our landlord promptly addressed and repaired or replaced even when there was a storm damage at midnight. Now, with that being said, that's my experience being a tenant. I know that, you know, if something broke in the middle of the night, like, because you, it's coincidence always how the hottest day of the year, your AC is going to go out or whatever. But I don't know all of the codes and compliances of a building itself. I know whether or not something's broken in the house and whether it needs to be fixed. My experience is very positive. So it doesn't seem to be the nature that I've experienced from Mr. Shelley to not be compliant with requests. But I'll read on. Excuse me. With that being said, I have to weigh in with some great concerns I have regarding some activity of the city officials' delegation of the word "access." On several occasions, there have been trespassing issues in reference to Williamsburg city representatives accessing the property without prior authorization, permission, or notice, conducting activities such as coming up to the windows and taking pictures, resulting in creating a negative atmosphere, which has not been considered when these decisions are made to access property without protocol of authorization, permission, or notice, which is purely negligent. Allow me to express with great honesty, and since I'm coming on after Mr. Shelley, and like I said, you have read the letter before, but I just want to put that personally, you can hear it coming from my mouth. Allow me to express with great honesty, so there's an understanding of a further nature. As a female and a victim of stalking, okay? Stalking would be of the nature of coming onto somebody's property to their windows unannounced, that kind of thing, which, I'm not saying a city inspection is stalking, no. I'm not saying that. However, the, if you don't know somebody's coming and somebody's rustling by your window, your first instinct is that your heart's going to jump. Do you know what I mean? And so with that being said, I apologize for the pause. Okay, as a female and a victim of stalking and home invasion and a rape at age twenty, this is absolutely a violation of my security and privacy rights and leaves me entirely fearful, triggering emotional panic about this unnecessary and unreasonable visits. I am reaching out to you so you can clearly understand that without proper procedures in place and followed, that a domino effect can damage more than you realize. I'm very aware, I'm not the only female that's been a victim of crime. However, I do know how abundantly the crime rate has increased, and it's imperative that the safety and security is in the forefront. Action must be taken to ensure due diligence so the rights of others are not violated. My expectation is also my right for the city to be compliant in the delegation of the word "access." And then I wrote a little note as I was sitting there saying, you know, I need clarification of the regulations and, if not revisiting the regulations. And like I said, with this being said, and the timing of how things went with this meeting, I'm kind of on the caboose of this. And, but I will say that I appreciate your apology. I accept your apology at this point. However, I don't feel that I would be getting a response unless I was here in person because I think with this being said, it's like I was kind of shoved to the side because, oh, well, that's, that's his tenant, and we've had trouble, we've been having litigations and trouble. And so seeing here and listening to this before I came out, actually, I felt that scenario, and I don't want that to cloud my situation in any way. I do appreciate you offering to meet with me and my husband to further discuss. And like I said, I still don't know how it didn't get to the right person so that it would get to me, so that somebody could respond to me, so I wouldn't be here two months later still asking why.
Well, part of that might be my fault. I had a conversation with your husband after the meeting that I thought, in fact, was a response, but apparently it wasn't. So, but we will respond to you, and we will meet with you at your convenience.
And like I said, maybe not cloud yourselves with litigations and paperwork and such and not start like making this pile of, to where you're just putting it on the pilot cable, so to where you're starting to kind of become complacent. Just because someone approaches you several times doesn't, doesn't, isn't a cause for complacency. It's actually a cause for awareness. So I appreciate your time. I know I've taken more than three minutes.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for coming today.
I appreciate it.
And we will be in touch.
I'll be here after you.
Any other public comment? If not, I think that brings us to the end of our meeting.
I don't have anything for closed session. So I'm going to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn. Please call the roll, please, Jerry.
Aye.
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 Aye.